At this time, I would like to welcome all the people that are viewing from home and welcome those of you that are here with us tonight. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have any public participation at this time? Anyone from the public? Okay, hearing them, we'll go into the next item. Presentation of audits. I think we're going to use probably the mic so that folks at home can hear you and you could both introduce yourselves.
Can you hear me?
Well, we can hear you. That's for folks at home, so you won't hear any amplification or anything, yeah.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight to talk about the results of your last few audits. I'm Cheryl Burke. I'm one of the partners at Molson Heath and Company. Our company specializes in audits of governmental entities. And this is Alyssa Samar. She's an audit manager that works for our firm and managed your most recent audits. I understand that you have copies of the last few audits here, and if it would be okay, I'd like to do an overview of some of the highlights of those audits without having to flip through the pages. And then, of course, at the end, if there's any specific questions that you have about the financial statements, I can certainly answer those. I think it's important to talk, since we're wrapping up recently, the last three years of audits, to talk a little bit about the history of your district, talk about the timing of the audits, give you an overview of some of the highlights, and also answer your questions. So I wanted to start with just a little bit of a reminder. With fiscal '27's drafts being issued about a week ago, you are caught up with your annual audits, and that's been a process over the last few years, as you know. With the last three years, '15 through '17, being issued in the last few months. It's important to note that we were engaged to do your '16 and '17 audits in the fall of 2017. Last year, we did some work. We came up to your business office and we performed procedures with the information that was available. At that time, we were working to wrap up the 2015 audit. We were starting on the '16 and the '17 audits. And we came back and forth a couple of times to the business office to get the information completed. The reports, I'm just going to give you a kind of more of a timeline. The reports for '15 and '16 were issued in March of 2018, and again, the '17 audit is in draft form right now. So a lot of work has gone in the last year or two in getting caught up with the audit process. Just a little bit of history, I'm sure you're all aware. A lot has happened with this district in the last few years with, you had turnovers in key positions. You also had Middleton withdrawing from the SAU and the dissolving of the SAU, and that's a really big undertaking for any SAU. And in addition to regular roles and responsibilities that financial and accounting staff might have. So I wanted to talk to you about the audit opinion for each of the three...
Can you speak up a little bit more?
Oh, sure.
Or we can only shut this off.
We've got the air conditioner on, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to turn those off?
You're probably not.
Do you want to? Not really.
You can just project a little bit more if you can.
Okay, I'll try to speak up a little bit. Talking, what's very important about having an audit or an independent audit report is that you're hiring us to give an opinion on your financial statements. So when you open up the draft of the reports, the draft for '17 and the two others that have been finalized recently, the independent auditor's report is really the only page in the audited financial statements that belongs to the audit firm. And so that's what you're hiring us for, to give an opinion on the numbers and the presentation and the accounting principles that are used to prepare those financial statements. So there's a couple of different sets, what I call sets of financial statements in governmental financial statements, and that's a requirement of the reporting standards or governmental reporting standards. There's one presentation that's called the fund basis of accounting. So you're all familiar with the fund balance. That's one presentation. It's what they call a short-term perspective. It's focused on spendable resources that are available at the end of the year to be used in the next year. And then there's another set of financial statements, the starting point being the fund balance for financial statements. And then it puts long-term items such as capital assets, long-term debt, compensated absences on there to get a full, long-term perspective. So when we're giving our audit opinion, we're giving our audit opinion on different numbers, on different ways that the numbers are presented in the financial statements. So with respect to our independent auditor's report for '15, '16, and '17, we're giving you what is called a clean or unmodified audit opinion on your fund basis financial statements. Yep?
'14 is in there too, since that was done in the fall.
Yep, it would be the same too, yeah, and I keep talking...
So I just wanted folks to know that.
Oh, thank you. And for the government-wide financial statements, that's that long-term perspective, starting point being the fund basis financial statements, putting all the long-term assets and liabilities on there, we're giving you a qualified or modified opinion because you don't have a liability on there related to GASB statement 45, Governmental Accounting Standards Board number 45. And what that relates to is other post-employment benefits. In recent years, the GASB has been requiring for that portion of your financial statements certain liabilities to be put on the presentation. And what OPEB represents, Other Post-Employment Benefits, there's a liability that exists out there because you allow your retirees to participate in your health insurance programs. Even though you're not, they pay 100% of it, they're driving up the cost of it. And in order to get that liability into your financial statement, you have to hire an actuary typically, and so you haven't done that. And so that's what the exception is. But for the fund basis financial statements, they're a clean and unmodified audit opinion, and that's really important because that's what you're hiring us for. I wanted to talk about the fund balance, the general fund, unassigned fund balance for '15, '16, and '17. And I'm going to start with fiscal '2017. In the draft FY '2017 financial statements, the unassigned fund balance is showing at And that's a result of rolling forward all of the audit adjustments since we've completed '15, '16, and '17 all in a row. So when you do an audit, when you close the books internally and when you do the audit, you need to do each one sequentially because if there's any adjustments that have occurred in an earlier year, those need to get carried forward so that you have the same starting point in the next year. And so when you do that, at the end of fiscal '17, you have that $973,955, and that's the number that we're giving the clean audit opinion on that. And so what we're saying...
Can you reference a certain page?
Sure, absolutely. If you look on page 13 of the June 2017 financial statements, there's a general fund column. And what that includes is also your reserve funds, and that's an accounting requirement or accounting standard. So if you look down at the bottom of the page, on page 13. Bottom of the page, unassigned fund balance in the general fund column is the $973,955. So that's the unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2017, the audited unassigned fund balance. So while we're on this page, a couple of other things to point out in the fund balance section. The committed fund balance, $1,538,104, that represents the amount of your reserve funds that are being held by the trustee of trust funds. The assigned fund balance, $475,888, that's comprised of a number of different items, and I'm going to be flipping. If you have the report in front of you, it's on page 29, gives you an expanded version of what makes up that fund balance.
You're going way too fast and you're flipping through files that I can't find. So you need to either identify which file you're looking for or put something on the screen so we can see it, because this isn't helping me at all.
Okay. Page 29?
Of what?
Of the June 30, 2017 financial statements.
Do you guys want some heart puppies, maybe?
Is that in here?
This is the page 29. She was referencing.
Yeah, that's it.
This is it?
This is the red, this would be red and electronic.
And the first one she was referencing was on page 29.
But I've not paid so far, but that number wasn't there. My page there. I'm just disappointed there's no presentation for us to look at. It's ridiculous. Not have one.
Does everybody have page 29 of the FY '17 financial statements? Page 29 is a footnote disclosure. It gives a summary of your fund balances as of June 30, 2017. So I'm looking in the general fund column. There's multiple categories of fund balance. That is a requirement of the reporting standards under the Governmental Accounting Standards Board number 54. If you look in the column going down, the first category is $1,538,104. Those are your capital reserve funds at that date. There's a second category, assigned. There's different items that are included as assigned fund balance. One of them is the March 2017 warrant article number 12 for $100,000. RSA 198 for $174,062, and that's your retained fund balance that has been voted. Food service fund deficit funding, $80,491. What that represents is monies that have been set aside to fund the deficit that exists as of June 30, 2017, in the food service fund. And then $129,335 of encumbrances. And the definition of an encumbrance under generally accepted accounting principles is if you've ordered or contracted for something as of the end of the year, but the vendor hasn't performed yet. It was budgeted for in your '17 budget, and you're allowed to encumber that money until the vendor performs. So basically, it's charged to your '17 budget. And then everything that remains is unassigned fund balance. So you see down at the bottom, you have $973,955 as of June 30, 2017. And again, that's a result of rolling forward all the last few years of numbers, posting the audit adjustments and coming up with that number. And so that's what we believe to be your unassigned fund balance as of that date and time. So one of the things that is part of the audit procedure is to compare the amount, the audited amount of the unassigned fund balance to what is reported on your MS25 and what is used to reduce taxes in the subsequent fiscal year. The number that was reported in the fall of 2017 on those two reports was $173,306. So there's a significant difference between what ended up being the audited unassigned fund balance and what was reported on the 25 and also used to reduce taxes for FY '18. We did some analysis in 2017 just to get an understanding of what was reported on the MS25. At that point in time, when the MS25 was being prepared in the fall, it was prepared based on the most recent information that was available at that time. And if you think about the timing of these audits, a good number of the audit adjustments had not been rolled forward yet or made. So a lot of that difference relates to timing of the numbers. So at that point in time, that was what was used. So at that point in time, I think the primary difference between what was put on the MS25 and what ultimately ended up being the unassigned fund balance was an overstatement of liability. So that would have the effect of reducing your fund balance. So basically, at that point in time, there were a number of different liabilities that were uncertain. The answer was unknown. And then that was what was recorded on the MS25, causing the number to go down. So it's important to note that the $973 was available to be used in the FY '18 budget, but it wasn't known at the time that those forms were prepared or the tax, the reduction in the tax assessment was being calculated. The next opportunity for you to use your unassigned fund balance will be this coming fall in your FY '19 budget. And a recommendation that we have going forward now that you've caught up on your audits is, now that we're approaching the end of fiscal '18, is to post the audit adjustments, the cumulative audit adjustments, bringing your balances up to the same starting point as the June 30 balances in the audit report. Re-roll those balances, beginning balances, into FY '18 and close '18 and perform the audit of the fund basis numbers. Typically, school districts in New Hampshire have that portion of their audit completed perhaps late August is the timeframe so that everybody has a good number to put on the MS25. Questions?
Questions at this point?
I guess mine are all basic. How is it possible that we can put unknown on a line for an MS25?
To answer your question, we, most of the numbers, school districts in New Hampshire, they don't have their audits completed at that time, so they are using unaudited information. So it's not just you. It's pretty much every district in New Hampshire is using unaudited information when they're preparing the MS25 due to the due date. It's so close to the fiscal year end, and it's difficult. If there's things that are up in the air, liabilities that, potential liabilities that may need to be booked but have not been, the information isn't available. People do the best that they can. But in theory, that number should be the audited number.
Is it something you can ask during public at the end?
I'd like to ask the auditor while I look on...
Well, my question is, is it a question that you can ask us, Tim, during public at the end? Because if I open up questions now, we're going to open up, that wasn't my plan. Is it something you can ask at the end?
Is it something that the auditor can be here at the end?
He doesn't mean the end of the meeting. He means the end of the presentation, right?
The presentation, right? Yes.
I wasn't planning on doing an open question at the end of the presentation. Does the board want to? That wasn't my plan, but I don't mind.
Yeah.
Or is it easier to do it as we go?
Either way, whatever you say.
Would you just come up though to the microphone, Tim, or that one, either one, so that folks at home can hear?
My name's Tim Brown. I'm a resident of Farmington. I'm looking on page 29 under the assigned expenditures for the current fiscal year we're talking about. And on the MS25, there's a reference to $160,000 year-end transfer to a special revenue account for food services. Yet on page 29, it's showing a food service fund deficit and the amount of $80,491. Are those the same end-of-the-year expenditures?
I don't have that page of the MS25 available. And again, those numbers for the food service fund also would have been based on unaudited information. I do recall in 2017, there were some issues related to liabilities that definitely changed from the time the MS25 was prepared to the time of the draft was issued for the audited financial statements. Specifically, there was an unknown related to the vendor that is for the food service. So that is one of the numbers that changed.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions at this point? Yes?
So the unassigned fund balance at the end of 2017 was $973,955. That includes the monies that were returned to the town that were the $173,306.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So the balance would be what is actually still out there, if you will.
Available to be used, right. Correct. To be used in the fall to reduce taxes.
Okay. And that is as a result, it's not just three years, but it's four years that have been completed this year of audits. That this isn't because, you know, when I came in to finish the audits for my first year as superintendent, we had three other years that had to be completed before my year's worth of audits could be completed. So I want people to understand that we were playing a great deal of catch-up this year because of essentially what I inherited. And that this wasn't because my administration was trying to drag heels or not get it done. It's because, lo and behold, I had a whole lot more in front of me than I realized. Also, that as this, yes, these MS25s have been based on unaudited numbers. But because this is often what happens, as you've said, because of timing, in your opinion, are you finding any evidence that the accounting was done improperly? Because I think that's where people are looking at, there's this money left. Where are we and why? And I think that's the big question that's hanging out there that I would really like explained.
Sure. When you say improperly, there were audit adjustments that were made, but they really related to not so much correcting the books. I mean, that wasn't the issue of the audit adjustments. It was mostly, or the bigger audit adjustments were related to the unknown. So I mentioned liabilities, using the food service fund as an example. That's something that has been out there for a while. And the number that was used on the MS25 was a very conservative figure because it was the worst-case scenario, having the effect of lowering the number that you were using for the MS25, if that makes sense. So...
And we're looking at the cumulative effect of four years of that, not just one year.
Right. And again, your history. If you think about the things that have happened to the school district, you know, just off the top of my head, a few years ago, there was an issue between Middleton, $400,000 going, you know, who was going to pay what. So there's been some really big, complicated issues that have contributed to some of the audit adjustments and ultimately changed the unaudited information that's been used.
Mrs. Barron?
The difference between the $973,955 as stated and the $173 that was returned in the last budget cycle is approximately $800,000. We had four years' worth of unaudited books. Let's say the average fund balance, we know this year we used $173,000. Let's say the average fund balance at the end of fiscal year '14 was $200,000. In the end of '15, $200,000. You see where I'm coming at? Four years of not knowing. Had there been an audit done for fiscal year '14, '15, that would have been addressed the following September. The numbers weren't there for the budget committee to know that that amount of money sitting there, $800,000, is not sitting in a checkbook anywhere. It is brought forward. So then you do your opening for '15, '16, and again, you don't have the numbers. You don't know that last year there was an additional $200,000 available to be returned. So it just gets, the ball rolls down the hill a little bit faster. An average of $200,000 in un, well, I call it...
Unassigned.
Unassigned, I call it unexpendited fund balance for four years is equal to approximately the $800,000. The challenge will be, when the budget committee sits down in September to bring, to prepare their fiscal year 1920, they'll have to account for the fact that because it wasn't taken care of year by year by year by year, that now they have to come up with a way to manage the $800,000 that was technically on paper but not returned. Does that sound right?
I think most of what you said sounds right. I mean, you've been working with some unknowns in your budgeting process.
I think my biggest point was I don't want people to think that one of the checkbooks has an additional $800,000 and that that's not how it works. Had the audits been performed on an annual basis, then the following budget cycle, that number would have been taken care of, and it wasn't. And then you do it again, and you do it again, and you do it again. And accumulatively, you have a sum that four times had the opportunity to be returned but wasn't.
Are you still presenting?
I just wanted to be sure that I answered everybody's questions.
Yeah, I mean, we might get to another point where there's more questions and I'll let people ask them.
I also wanted to address, we've had some phone calls in recent weeks, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the dissolution of the SAU because it is, in fiscal 2017, what was remaining of the SAU is now included on Farmington's books. So if you look back at the last audited financial statements for the SAU, the unassigned fund balance was about $6,500. What happened in the FY '17 draft that we're looking at, that came onto the books of Farmington. So it's included in that $800,000 number. There's still a little bit of winding up that needs to happen with some of the SAU information. So what, kind of taking you through the process, at June 30, 2016, the SAU had $6,500 in equity or in fund balance. In FY '17, that was all brought on, all of the liabilities and assets of the SAU and that $6,500 fund balance got brought on to the books of Farmington. In 2017, some of those SAU receivables were collected and some of those liabilities were paid. At the end of June 30, at the end of June 2017, there was still money in what had previously been the SAU's bank account. It's important that that is understood, that that is not available money to spend. The available money that was provided to Farmington was the $6,500. What needs to happen with the $100,000 that remains is that there's still some liabilities and receivables that have to take place in fiscal '18. And then the end or the last check to close out the checkbook would be the $6,500 to close it out. So it's really important that if you, when you're looking at that, that that's not extra money that's going into the budget or anything like that. It's the $6,500. So it doesn't belong to anyone. You have to pay your liabilities first with it.
So to clarify, the only piece that's left that's coming back to the Farmington School District is $6,500. So the $100,000 that looks like it's owed to, paid to, that part needs to be cleared back and forth between Farmington and the SAU. That essentially will become a wash, and the only thing that's left is $6,500.
Correct.
So, okay.
Did you have any other questions? I mean, I certainly can walk through the financial statements in detail if you'd like or answer any questions that you have.
Let's do a little of the board.
Okay.
It's not one I'm sure if you can even answer. However, when doing the audits for all four years, I understand it's almost $200,000 each year. Has there been a commonality between each year in the corrections, if you will, that show where that expenditure should have come from? Or do you notice any patterns?
Not to my recollection. I mean, basically, the audit adjustments are related to a lot of the unknowns that were happening over the last few years and really outside of the district's control, things such as, you know, keep using the food service bill. the district's control, things such as, you know, keep using the food service bill, you know, that was up in the air for a while. But mostly what we consider to be, kind of timing cutoff-type issues, but those play out in a subsequent year. So, those are pretty much the standards. And like I mentioned earlier, it wasn't that there was problems in the bookkeeping or the financial records. It was just that there was a lot of unknown information and a lot of thing, a lot of the audits all taking place at once, you know, arriving at this cumulative number.
I just threw $200 out to make sure.
Yeah, oh, no, I just kind of piggybacked on that number just to...
Our town, the auditor that do the work for the town's books took a look at these reports, the ones that were completed for fiscal year '15 and fiscal year '16, and individually compared each unassigned fund balance to the MS-25s that were filed for that year. It was of the opinion that each difference should be summed, and that is the amount that the school district should be returning to the town of Farmington in order to reduce the tax rate. Do you agree with that assessment done by the town's auditors?
It's really for the prior years, and you're talking about, I think, '14, '15, and '16, comparing the MS-25 to the...
Fifteen and sixteen.
They just looked at those two.
They just looked in those two. It's the same thing. It's, the audits were complete. The information that was put on the MS-25 was based on the information available at the time. And the unassigned fund balance is a cumulative number. So, you need to be forward-thinking with the 973.
So, really, the only comparison that counts is this most recent one, the 2017?
Really, yes, correct. And actually, it's the 2018 one that ends up reducing it.
Oh, that we're about to...
Right. So, we're caught up on '17. So, it's really critical that with the closing of your '18 year at the end of this month, that things get closed out quickly. And my suggestion would be to get your fund basis numbers audited quickly so that that number is the same that gets put on the MS forms and used to reduce the taxes.
Mr. Brown has his hand up. You had said you had the question. Do you want to wait?
No, I'll wait.
Mr. Brown.
In relation to Mrs. Cardinal's question, and looking at the numbers, can you give us a bottom-line number of all the years that were just audited of what is in the unanticipated fund balance that was not returned to the town? Is that, is that the 973, 955 minus the 173, 306 that was returned to the town?
Yes.
Is that the bottom-line number?
As it...
I think it's 80649.
As it stands at the end of '17, and then with the '18 audit, that could shift. But right now in time, that's where we are, yes. That's correct, okay.
Nope, correct. Thank you.
Translators are us, yes.
Other questions from board members?
Thank you.
Other questions from folks that are here? Nobody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe drive home, wherever that is.
I think this is the board one. Any discussion on that at this point? You want to move into approval of minutes?
On the approval of minutes, the first one for May 21st had been tabled. And so, bringing that back, and then the dates, for those of you who have printed packets, the dates on your minutes are incorrect. They should read June 4th for the public session and then non-public sessions 1, 2, and 3. And public session 2 for non-public, excuse me, non-public session 2 was sealed. It wasn't marked on the print version, but it is sealed. And we had discussed sealing potentially 1 and 3 as well, and we can discuss that as we get there.
Well, do we want to table the minutes for discussion in non-public?
Maybe do the public?
Well, we can do the public ones. Do I have a motion for the public minutes of, this is a long date, June 4th?
June 4th, yes.
So moved by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Mr. Frida. Discussion?
I have some spelling.
Yes, swag, yeah.
And also, oh, that's in the non-public. And just maybe note that he was a student rep to the board.
Right. Well, it does say student body representative in the others present.
Oh, all right.
Since he was at the head table.
Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Cardinal.
I believe it's the last page because what I can see is a word doc, I don't have it printed out, where the motion was made to seal non-public session 2 minutes until July 1st. We put the reason why we're going to seal, and I can give you the language that comes from the RSA 91A colon 3.
And that was, that was contract negotiation, was it not?
Yes, we would render board business ineffective. But I can give you the exact language in an email so that you can copy and paste that in whenever we say for reputation or for, we want to render board business ineffective.
Yep.
Anything else from these minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Do I have an abstention?
What abstention?
And do I have a motion to table the non-public minutes? So moved by Mrs. Moore, and second by Mr. Frida. All those in favor? Aye.
So, the next piece in your packet is the general assurances that I had brought up last board meeting. The School Boards Association is going to be a bit longer in pulling together their policy around this. And at this point, have strongly recommended that school boards go ahead and do the motion and vote to accept and allow the board chairman to sign so that we aren't holding up our grant status. These are required in by the middle of July, but at this point, I have grants that are starting to roll in now. And so, if we could do a motion tonight and allow our chairman to sign this with me, that would be lovely.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Moore, and second by Mr. Frida. Discussion?
Do you need us to state the motion?
Probably.
To allow...
To allow Mr. Shagnan to sign with Superintendent Vaughn. You guys? I read the issue, so.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay. This is the school board certification here, and I will, I need to sign that. And then I will need to give a copy of these minutes as well, so that they have that on file that you voted to allow us to sign.
And this says blue ink, and I've got black.
Oh, we'll find a blue pen. I have one somewhere.
Is that blue?
There you go.
Okay. They come flying.
Can't miss that.
Are you going to type this? Because it says typed.
It will likely be, yeah, we'll do something with it. Yeah. We can scan it and type it. They didn't give it to me in an easy form to do that, but thank you.
All right. FHS Student Handbook Approval.
I've also included in your packet a summary of the changes made to make it a little bit easier to go through rather than, I mean, certainly for your reading pleasure. But names have been changed to reflect the position rather than Mrs. so-and-so or Mr. so-and-so so that it's a little bit more fluid. We've updated the calendar. We've added procedures for being able to participate in the HISA program. We've adjusted the wording to reflect the new block schedule. We've eliminated references to study halls just as a general, everybody gets a study hall sort of thing. Release time for seniors has been deleted. There are pieces that can be earned, but it's not just a general everyone gets. Deleted school insurance language as that's no longer available. We've updated after-school detention language. We've clarified our practices for 18-year-olds to dismiss themselves or be dismissed. And updated the bell schedule also to reflect the new schedule. If we could get a vote, that would be lovely, so that we could actually get this to the printer.
Didn't you just say that school insurance isn't available? Because on page 15, it's offering school insurance.
Page 15 was supposed to be changed. Hold on. Make sure we've got the school insurance. Is it, okay, all right. I will update that. It is not. Students participating in athletics are required to show proof of insurance, but the other part is not available. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Angie has a question, sir.
Okay, sorry, Mrs. Cardinal.
I move to accept this FHS Student Handbook as a final read with the one modification to update the insurance clause.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Discussion? Discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Letter of recommendation, the NHSBA grant.
And this is, probably Mrs. Cardinal can speak to?
Bringing this to the board on behalf of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. They're applying for a grant for college and career readiness. It's an innovative partnership promoting readiness within New Hampshire. And part of that is three letters of recommendation from current and active member boards of the association. So, in your packet is a draft letter from the Farmington School Board. And if there's a motion second and approval, then we can have Mr. Shagnan sign this as our chairperson, and we could forward it along to the NHSBA per inclusion in their grant application.
I'll make that motion that we have Mr. Shagnan sign this on behalf of the school board.
I'll second. Motion by Mrs. Moore, and second by Mr. Frida. Discussion?
Thanks for the...
Anything else you want to add? Angie, no?
I mean, I'm assuming we already had a chance to view the, what the grant is all about and that we do agree with everything that's written in this letter of recommendation. I would say that if even one board, we would need this to be a unanimous support, I think, as a board.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
So, we'll just scan that copy.
Do I go to you or to Ms. Ellen?
Yeah, if we could put it on our letterhead.
Yes, I can do that.
I can re-sign.
That's, I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, award of auditing services bid.
So, you have in your packet several audit services. We have been with our current auditing firms since...
2009.
2009, back during my first tenure at the SAU office. Typically, audit firms, typically school districts will change audit firms every five to seven years or so just to make sure that you have a fresh set of eyes on the books, that there's not a, you know, complacent relationship that has developed. We wanted to make sure that we got caught up on where we were, which is, you know, I was not going to change midstream till I got things caught up and knew exactly where we were with our audits. But we have put out to bid now, and you have in front of you the proposals for the audits. We have four companies that have brought forward proposals. My recommendation is that the board go with Plodzik and Sanderson. They are not the lowest bidder. However, the next lowest bidders pieces include a higher hourly rate of, and all the other things that we might need to catch up with, which I feel will quickly put us where the next bid is and then sum. And the firm that I'm recommending has come very, very highly recommended to me.
Is there a question?
In a lot of the, in the column for the one that you're recommending, they have a lot of...
To be determined with the district.
Yes.
Will that have a financial impact depending on our decision?
It will be more in line with, rather than saying it has to be this time or this time, they will work with us and our timetable. And as far as I'm concerned, particularly in light of our most recent discussion on the audits, these can't happen fast enough. I've already had a discussion with the business office in regards to what our cutoff dates will be and in making sure that we get everything nailed down as quickly as possible so that come August 1st, we're ready to start pulling as much as possible to hand in. Typically, with the audit cycle, there will still be some things that are, I hate to use that word unknown because it's been thrown out so nicely tonight, but, but at least the majority of the pieces can be much more closely estimated so that the MS-25 is built on more solid numbers than we've been able to do in the past. And then, the completed audits generally happen in November. And then, that would be the last piece that would then go into setting the next pieces of the tax rate. But I don't intend anything to go into the winter if I can help it. I want this done quickly.
For fluidity, wouldn't it be, I mean, Melanson and Heath have really just, like, ran with it?
We've been with them for a long time. I feel like it's probably time for a change just in terms of having our books with a fresh set of eyes. They have done a lot of work for us this year. We've spent a lot of quality time together. And, I mean, I have nothing against Melanson Heath. Best audit practice is to be changing. And we've now been with that firm since 2009. We're going on 10 years. It's longer than the typical.
Mr. Frida? So, I'll move that we accept the bid from Plodzik and Sanderson and use them as our...
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Policy review. Get a few here.
The policies that you have before you tonight are a series of those lovely intertwined policies that seem to be, these are all based around the acceptable use policy and the Internet standards policies that we're required to have under law so that we can have student and staff access to Internet... and staff access to Internet resources, but also have an accountability piece built in there. It also details what we are required to have for filters, for protections in place, and for the accountability piece if someone steps over those lines. And so what we had was, again, from 2007 or so, with a few updates in between, but there's an awful lot that's happened on the Internet since 2007. And missing a number of legal references in the intertwined pieces. So JICL is the Internet Access for Students, and then the JICLR is the Acceptable Use Procedures for Students that students would need to sign in order to be given access.
Can you take those two as a group, or you want to take them all together?
Well, JBEF is the same document for staff, and then the JBEFR is their acceptable use policy that they would need to sign. And then...
G.
Yeah, G, oh, sorry. GB, sorry. GBEF. Alphabet soup. And then EHAA is the General Computer Security Email and Internet Communications that is the umbrella that the others fit under. They're all intertwined. So you can take them separately if it makes more sense, but that's what each one references the other, which is why you get them all together.
I'm motion to accept the JICL, JICLR, JBEF, JBEFR, EHAA as a final read.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept the group as a final read, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these? Nice job. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, you had some other new business with Ellen?
I do. I was contacted by the family of Nathan C. Turner, asking to update their memorial for Nathan. They planted a rose of Sharon tree out by the soccer field. They would like to include a plaque and a contemplation bench by that tree, so that somewhere down the road, people will know why the tree is there. And there is another plaque that is up by the flagpole that has Nathan's name, and those are some classmates, and they'd like to just come up and clean that up and, and do some landscaping work around that, too. I told them I didn't see that there would be an issue with that, but that I would bring it to the board, because there is that strange gray area of this dollar amount I can accept, this dollar amount you can accept, but there's not necessarily a dollar amount attached to this. So I wanted to bring it so that we could have it in the minutes, what was happening and why.
So you just want a motion?
I would like a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept.
Allows the family to put a plaque and contemplation bench.
Second by Mr. Frida. Discussion?
We actually have a, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We do actually have a policy when it comes to installing plaques or any sort of memorials on campus, so it is fitting that our board would have a motion on this.
I just think it's a great idea, so I applaud the family for, for doing that. The bench is a very nice thing. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Do you have one of them?
I do. So as, as we're doing some house cleaning, there is a textbook closet here at the high school that has some textbooks in it that are, some of them were still, yeah, some of them were here and collecting dust when I first came to the high school. Some of them are a little bit more recent than that, but we do have a company that is somewhat willing to perhaps purchase some of those textbooks, but I cannot do that without a declaration of surplus goods. So I would like, because for me to try to go in and tell you exactly how many books and which ones, I'm not sure which they will sell, if we could do, if you could grant me the authority as a blanket for the closet to go through and determine where things are, under the declaration of surplus goods, any revenues that we would receive from that would go back to the general fund. It's not something that I can necessarily designate, well, this goes to this department and this goes to this department, because I can't spend revenues that way. But, so I want that out there, too, so people aren't, you know, oh, we're going shopping. Not necessarily. And with the age of some of those textbooks, we're probably talking quarter pennies on the dollar, what we're going to get back for them. However, I do need to, I would love to just reclaim a closet, and maybe get something in the revenues in, in the same time.
I'm thinking motion that you can declare the books in the closet surplus.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion by Mrs. Moore, and second by Mr. Frida. Discussion?
Are you going out, there's just a company that's interested.
There's a company that's interested. For what we're going to get on it, I feel like going out to bid is probably not going to be the best use of our time and resources. If suddenly we get warring bids for our ancient textbooks, then I'll let you know. But I'm not anticipating that.
I don't see it happening.
I don't either.
We need to take a look at what the policy and requirements are on that. I think you might need a separate motion and approval to go outside of the surplus bidding process, unless it calls out, you know, a minimum value that we have to follow the process.
Okay. All right. And if it does, then we'll do that.
I would have looked at it if we were going to talk about it, but we can definitely move forward with this decision on declaring a surplus. Just how you handle that.
Yep.
Well, we can decide now that we allow it.
Well, doesn't she need a figure to, to go with?
Oh, you're, you're talking how much we'll accept for them?
No, I'm saying that we would have to grant approval to not follow the surplus process of going out to bid.
Right.
Because these were purchased with, you know, federal, but, public funds.
Will we then need a second motion to accept the funds?
Right. Then the bids, if we say, no, you need to follow the bid process, then we would see the three bids, just like purchasing anything.
Right.
Exactly the same thing as it, when it comes to selling off anything.
But as far as whatever funds that come in, if they are, you know, I, I will be reporting on whatever revenues there are anyway, and if they're over that threshold, then you would need to vote to accept them, yes.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll move to waive the bidding process in this case.
We probably need to vote on them on the floor.
Oh, watch. Go to the first motion. I mean, I've got that. All those in favor? All right. Case stand? I will move to suspend the bidding process in this case.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any discussion on that?
I'll just tell you, I'm going to be in opposition on this one, because, simply because we have no idea what kind of volume we're talking about.
Well, that's why I said we need a fig, we need a figure, right? I mean, we can't...
You'd like to see an inventory before you made that decision? Is that what you're saying?
That's my discussion.
It doesn't have to be precise, but...
For her to move forward tonight, the first motion is enough, I think. Then she can come back.
Declare a surplus. Right. Because I, I have no idea which of those books they will even touch. Some of them, some of them were old when I was in high school, so I'm not really sure.
How old is old?
Not as old as it could be.
Well, if we allow her to suspend the process, doesn't mean she has to. So if she does an inventory of the closet and determines that it might be something valuable that we could bid for, she can still decide to do it.
If I have any first editions, I'll let you know. I don't think, I don't think they're that old.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? opposed? Carrie's. That was it, right, for me?
Yes.
Any new business from the board?
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for graduation. It was very well done. I was, I was very happy in the audience. The kids did a great job. Nice job to everybody.
Speeches were great.
Thank you for speech.
Music was great.
Yes.
I really enjoyed the live music. I thought that was a nice addition. And I, I loved having the scouts involved. I thought that was classy, too, so.
Yeah. It was very nice.
All right. Old business? Old business? Anything else at this point?
I don't think so.
Okay. Public participation. Mr. Brown?
Just have two quick questions, just to, so I'm clear in my mind. The first is, I understand the explanation for the reason for the delay in the audits. Is there any state law or DRA regulations that put time limits on when audits have to be done?
It is within a year.
So they have to be completed within a year? Okay. My second question is, my understanding from the auditors tonight is that there's 800,650 in the unspent fund balance that has not been returned to the taxpayers. We're ending our current fiscal year at the end of this month, and there's a plan for almost an immediate audit, so when will this money be returned to the taxpayers?
My understanding is that it would be part of what we go forward in the fall.
So when the tax rate is set in the fall, this money would be returned to the town clerk's office, and that unspent fund balance would be used to reduce...
The unassigned fund balance. That's what I understand.
This year's taxes.
That's what I understand with the current process, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other public? Nothing else? All right. Well, thank you, folks, for tuning in tonight. Thank you for those who came out. Our next meeting is...
The next regularly scheduled meeting would be July 2nd. We may need to do nomination stuff the 25th, but I don't know for sure. And we have a non-public on the 20th.
Okay. So our next meeting is July 2nd, right here at 6:30 PM. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session 2 under RSA 91A colon 3, 2, A, B, and C, for nominations and resignations. So moved by Mrs. Moore, and second by Ms. McElhenney. All those in favor, I roll. Aye. Good night, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.